The regular meeting of the Henderson City Council Wednesday, February 21st, 2024, is called to order. First order of business is the minutes of the January 17th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. First, uh, order of business is consent agenda resolutions 2024, uh, 02 to 05. Oh, there's three for gambling, which are revision of addresses on the applications. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Any need for discussion on that?
I'll just make the motion to.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Uh, and then the sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax is just the next step in the state's budget. Basically, this resolution accepting the state of Minnesota's past law. I was a little bit questioned about in November.
Any discussion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Uh, request to appear before the council. Adam Arns.
Hey, council, I'm Adam Arns. I live on North Fifth Street, uh, also on the Henderson Fire Department. Uh, the reason I asked to appear is on behalf of our fire chief pointed out that there's opportunity for some money that the city has received called the Public Safety Aid. Why that benefit our organization is we put in a lot of hours, as you guys know, uh, the 9200 calls that we do a year on top of fundraising, 20 events of first stance, and me raffles and gambling, we use to try to fund our fire department as well as our joint power board as well. When we find out that there was $40,000 and we felt that there's a need definitely for our equipment, we're still building, um, there's a need for our radios, our truck fund, uh, our special equipment funds, our things that we could use and need that money for. Uh, so what I'm asking for the city is consideration and giving us some type of dollar amount uh, in March where we have a more specific dollar amount once our fire department meets. Uh, a couple of things and conversations with a few of you, and I appreciate your guys' time this week as I've asked questions and reached out. There was some kind of confusion with the ways the laws are written or whatever about 10,000 people in a city and there's these rules about what this is for. For these cities, it still follows the under 10,000. I talked about the partner today. She was doing her kind of due diligence yesterday and today about that. Um, we still, as a city of Henderson, would follow into that. And one of those things that it gives to would be fire equipment. Uh, and that's where we really would focus on where we're partnering this as our fire equipment. Uh, and we take pride in having our great good equipment to keep our city health and take care of it. Um, another point was about was a concern about joint powers and how that makes that look as far as the city of Henderson, giving money to the fire department and not joint powers not doing anything. My take, our take on that is that that tax dollars that funds one time Public Safety Aid was tax money from the whole state. It wasn't just city of Henderson's tax dollars that are given to them as well as the township paid into that. We paid into everyone from the city, so citizens of Henderson paid into those. I do recognize too that township didn't give that money either. So it's unfair to point the tie of township, so while they're not kicking back anything, why should we? Uh, so I just ask that this at this time, if you consider that in March, we, um, we will come back and ask for a more detailed description of what we're, the amount we're asking and what we intend to use it as a department in our March, we can ask, we can decide what specifically we want. Cause I didn't understand, like, well, we're not just gonna give you a chunk of money and have fun. Um, there needs to be some details on what we want that money for. Um, but just I want to put that on the table for you guys to process and think about. Any feedback from council? I'd appreciate it.
Well, as we've been advised, and this is, I'm not shitting you off.
Yeah, no, that's cool.
Uh, that that came to cities of less than 10,000 with no stipulations.
So, can I just, yeah.
It's not dedicated to.
Right, and that was, and that was where Bobby was, went to their resource area of Capitol Building today, um, three times, like, are you sure? And they said yes, three times, like, she checked it, you know, and she, we both were looking for in writing, but why isn't that, can we kind of ask the same question of why is $10,000 even such a big deal? Like, why don't you just say, you know, we see this money.
Can do whatever they want with it, yeah.
Well, yeah, right.
Essentially, basically, it's a $40,000.
So then it falls back into, can we, it says it falls back onto your city attorney or whoever we are losing currently, uh, to what, to decide upon the side for that then? If the city's unsure about spending that money, so I guess.
Well, essentially, what it, what it's telling us is that it really doesn't hold us even to public safety. Not that we want to deviate from that.
Right, right. With that, with that law in there, that's like, well, it's a wild west with that money kind of thing.
Exactly. The state was just so anxious to get rid of surplus money last, uh, last year that they just tossed it out.
And you're not hinting yet when I hear that, that's, is there still consideration towards fire department? Or we have ideas?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
My only concern has always been, you know, that whatever funding request we get from the fire department, and this is my personal opinion, the council has their own, uh, we have, we fund. And, but the funding mechanism is a combination of city involvement and the townships. It's the fire commission. If we, uh, basically we're subsidizing the township. If, yes, we are.
How, how sold though? That's.
Well, because, because the participation is what, 60/40?
But, sorry.
I think it's 50, 25/25.
Okay. Okay. So if, if the city would say, let's use $10,000.
Sure.
Uh, that is, and depending on where you guys figure out where to put it, could change my mind. But if we just simply say, here's $10,000, the township is not required to match it or participate.
Right, and so what, and I, I hear that, but that is never, we never, um, that can go specific to a fund like we have, so for a radio fund, a special equipment fund, where, um, I can hear where you can say maybe joint powers then would have say of where that money goes, but in those funds they don't, or in those accounts, they haven't know how they're on that.
But would they be funding those accounts if the city did not fund the $10,000?
No, those funds, uh, mayor, are funded through our gambling.
Okay, one really, yes.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we can do this or not. As a city council, can we ask the fire department to put it towards a certain fund, such as your radio fund or your truck fund? Or will, will you guys just do whatever you want?
I think it would be best if, like Adam said, we get you a list of what we need. Off the top of my head, we have these firefighters that are desperately need to turn up here. So that would be something to consider. Um, I think our savings are a big thing, so.
You can, you can absolutely designate where it goes.
Okay.
And you'll come back in March with those recommendations?
Yep.
Works for me.
I came in on the last minute. This is the first time that I'm hearing about this, is the request for $10,000.
Well, we have, we have allocated a certain amount. We'll come back in March, but we just wanted to be considered, put in consideration, have this discussion on the table, you know, put it on the table for a month and we'll follow up.
This is essentially your first.
Yes, yep, yep. So, yeah. Thank you guys for hearing us all and considering.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep.
All right. Cody?
Yeah.
Good time. See your show?
Where you want it. Splash pad stuff. I don't know. You're just on the agenda. Okay. Here for the splash pad update. Last night, the school board crewed the land and sailed to our group. And just looking for, I guess, a movement forward from the city of kind of the official go ahead, so we can start fundraising and all that good stuff, so.
I think that happened months ago.
So basically, the school district is asking how we're gonna handle the land transfer now, so I suggest we let Jason take care of it.
Yeah, the land transfer, this is for the splash pool on the survey. Yeah, essentially, what we need is, we need a survey showing what land, you know, we're to give. And ideally, it doesn't have to be done like this, but in a perfect world, it would be very similar to what we just did with the last land transfer. We had a survey done, would basically be a plat. This would be in a lot one, block one, such and such. And then once we get that survey done, then the school board and the city council will pass resolutions authorizing that transfer.
Sure.
Okay. Can be pretty easily done, but, you know, all of those things are processes.
The survey's done.
Oh, it is.
It's already been filed, and that's what the school board was discussing last night at their meeting.
Sure.
Yep, so that part is done, so it's nice. I mean, that part is, nice that it's all the way to that point that we can probably pull it pretty quick.
Sure.
Transition that way, so.
Give me the survey, and I can start drafting some resolutions, and we can get one here.
We're just waiting to get.
No, who? Is it the city?
Well, the school district probably passed it last night, so.
Right, right, but who does it, whose name does it transfer into?
To the city.
To the city, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Cause it'll be a city park.
That's fine.
Correct. Yeah, you wouldn't put that in the EDA's name, I mean, you're not gonna rip it out. So that's, that's a parcel that would be in the city's name.
Okay.
Okay.
Just like the last one.
What do we need, what do we need to do tonight?
So, I think that, like you said, you'll, you'll get the paperwork ready, you'll be, so maybe next month we can pass a resolution?
Yes. I, if, if the school was already passed it and essentially blessed it, I don't see why it would be good.
Okay.
Sure. So we get that plot and we get that stuff over to you and we can get it from there, so.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That's all we have. Thank you, thanks.
Uh, police chief's report.
January 2024, police report. Um, we had 22 assist public calls, six animal complaints, four agency assists.
That's, oh, that's an.
One domestic, two ordinance violation, three traffic citations, 26 traffic warnings, 86 direct patrol calls, and two informational, and some of the more serious things were we had, a verbal domestic, property damage report, vandalism report, citation for juvenile vaping, dog ordinance violation, and nuisance violation, and a sec. The squad car was in the shop for a week. Just got back to school.
What'd they have to do with it?
They put a new catalytic converter and oxygen sensors in it twice, cause the new, they put one new catalytic converter in it, and that was defective. And then I had to get it back again, and they didn't know what was wrong with it for quite a while, until they had, somebody from Ford came out and looked at it, and then they figured out that it had a bad, a bad converter. And the old squad, they take the transmissions going under that right now. Starting to holler through the bad, like, some gears are going bad and everything.
Is that a front wheel drive or a rear?
It's a front wheel drive.
Also, also.
I think a 3800, I think.
Transmissions, good engine transmissions are.
Yeah.
All right. And this is your equipment proposal list?
Yeah, this is the equipment proposal list here that, um, we're proposing to purchase. We can get a car out of Galena, Illinois. They have two left in stock of 23s. But if we order one, it's eight weeks. They told me a Dodge, we can still order one, get two. And then, if you have any questions about the other stuff, I mean, that's the, the equipment to put in it, there's a second listing there, and then the graphic company was separate for the car. And then the 32,000, that's for four new portals and two new car radios. And, uh, number five is the new body cameras and two squad cameras. I have to put in the new squad and then replace, we're having some problems with the watch guard camera. It acts up and doesn't work sometimes, but I think it's 10, 10 years old, something like that. And then a new radar for the new squad. And a new laptop for the new squad, and two new portable breath testers.
And the intention would be to do a.
Equipment certificate. And that would be combined with, um, some stuff for water, with James, and also office equipment, stuff that needs to be renewed here too. By looking at the end, for the certificate.
All of the others go ahead.
The, it's 19, we could be keeping that for sure, so. But the white ones gotta go.
How many officers do we have right now?
Three.
So why would we need four body cams?
Cause, um, I'm in the process of background, getting another part, okay?
They can't be shared?
No, they're not shared.
Yeah.
I just think that's a big cha-ching.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money.
Is that over what is budgeted or for?
Yeah, that's not.
In addition, this is be in addition, this equipment is a, is a new, not a new, but an additional, additional expenses. Not that it's not more than necessary, he's asking.
You guys had proposed to get a squad this year in, in Calhoun, so that's probably already figured. Um, but the radios and cameras are not.
Yep, okay.
And we're kind of forced to get the radios, cause they quit servicing. They can't even get batteries for them anymore, so.
Eric, are these all state bid prices?
The only one that I don't think is state bid is the, the Toughbook Catal- um, laptop. And I don't even know if that's on state bid. I'm not sure. I'd have to check.
So the, the four body worn cameras are now required?
Not yet required, but when.
Think it's coming?
I think it's coming.
Within the next five years more than likely.
But I, I think the, basically, it would reduce the liability on the city adding the cameras to.
I think there's a increased request, and Attorney Moran can probably agree with me, from defense attorneys for body worn camera footage.
Yeah, they always request.
Absolutely, and, you know, 15 years ago, I would say that I wasn't in favor of body cams, but now, if you have a domestic assault, frankly, any type of case, but largely domestic assault, um, the body cam footage is absolutely essential. And a lot of your domestic assault cases, stories change the longer the case drags out, and it's not unheard of to have a case drag out a year or a year and a half anymore. And so that initial footage, when the officer is responding, catching the activity shortly after it occurred, is in fact the best evidence that you can possibly have. I, I'm of the opinion nowadays that body cams are, they're better than hold in terms of evidence.
Also, there is a program, LensLock does also have a program that you can make five payments to per year. You don't have to do the whole foot fund at one time.
This is for the body cams?
For the body cams, yeah.
So you, you basically, five, five payments, five years?
Yeah, over five years, you can do five years.
So that, and that would just swing to a levy item over the next five years.
Yeah, could be, yeah.
Saves us any real money.
Do body cams then become property of Henderson PD, or do they go with the officer?
No.
It stays with, okay. So even if somebody leaves, they stay?
This program also has that after three years, if the technology changes, we'll get free new cameras in three years.
Okay.
If there's a change, there's a change to the technology.
Okay.
I have the whole bid, I didn't bring that up here today.
That's okay.
I can present, I can give that to you guys too, to read it over too, so.
One more question, and I'm not opposed to it, but my question is, is this cloud storage? Is that where your video's gonna go?
Yeah.
And then is there a yearly fee on that cloud storage?
Yeah, that's part of this program, is the fee is included in this price.
So then, is there, like, next year, is there another fee?
No, I think it's covered for the, for the five years, I think, so. And then I think after, I'd have to reread it. I'm not positive if it goes past five years. You might have to start paying a yearly fee after that, but.
You know, I guess I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not opposed to an equipment certificate being issued for it. I just would really want to make sure that all this stuff is coming in on state bid, so we're getting the best price.
Yeah, and that's, like they said, the laptop is the only one I know of that's definitely not a state bid, but, and I even asked them when I got the, I got it from the.
Morris.
Yeah, and I asked them if it was compatible with state bid, and she said, well, I don't know. She said, this is just with Panasonic's discounts to them is what this price is to them, so. So I have to go on the bid list, see if they have this same one available. This is the same model that we have now, and it's working very well, so.
Okay.
So you mentioned, you said there's two out of state somewhere. Is that, are those cheaper than ordering one or same price?
Actually, they're a little more money in Illinois than, I think it was like $3,000 in Illinois that was than the state bid here. But I was gonna check with our dealership that if, that you do this, they would say, it's Dodge of Burnsville, um, if they could maybe possibly deal and trade it.
Get it up here.
Get it up here for us.
Yeah.
Possibly. So I just, I gotta make that phone call yet to see if that's.
Well, they do it all the time, I don't know why they won't.
Yeah, I mean, they do it every day, just about their deal, trading cars all the time, so.
Well, once you find that, oh, that's obviously, it's getting to be more imperative with the, a white squad, where you die.
Well, you should hear it going down the road. Somebody asked Dan the other night, he said, uh, he said, well, they asked him why he was driving it, and he said, well, the car's in the shop, and they said, I think this one should go in the shop, and said.
That's a challenge.
All right.
Squad is the old white one, the white year?
Yeah. Well, what year is that?
It's 2012, I think, is the white one.
So what's the value of that?
About a fifty bucks. You have the question.
My only other thing is, you know, on the radios, I know the last time fire ordered radios, they were nine months out.
Yeah, they told me about eight right now. I actually ordered them already, but, uh, I don't know whether they're gonna get here for sure. More or less, said that they're catching up, but that's public, um, whatever.
Well, can we table it for a month and have Eric come to back and make sure everything's at state bid and see if they can do the Dodge transfer to?
Then in the meantime, you've got everything you need to prepare.
I would do that sort of certificate.
Okay. Besides the transmission of the.
Keep it quiet.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
SEH update.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a little while since I've been here, so.
You're avoiding us, Chris.
I've been sending Doug for a while here, so, but, uh, things are starting to pick up a little bit, so I kinda wanna talk about this current status of projects and what they're kind of being worked on. Uh, as far as the, the street utility project that's underway, the contractor plans to start work around April first, so, um, but it looks great to start earlier, but, uh, that's a chance that they'd rather take right now. So low limits do go into effect on Monday, um, and so that will, uh, probably remain in, probably six weeks anyways, so. Uh, but, uh, we do have a, uh, pre-construction meeting scheduled for the 25th of March, so the Monday before, I think it was, um, and so that is being over scheduled for this year, essentially. Not expecting anything too much different what they had done, uh, had from last year, but, uh, get an idea where they're gonna start and, uh, hopefully have a better idea of May dot's schedule as well for Highway 93 as far as that affecting Ridge Road, uh, since that's our, our greatest concern is trying to get Ridge Road done while 93 is open and all that, so. So that is, uh, part of it. The, the second part here I do have for you is, uh, more of a discussion piece, I guess. So we have been reviewing Beverly Lane, just in the East Side Hilltop School, um, as kind of the last portion of some older water main. So most water mains been replaced with a project. The water main on South Street from Beverly to Ridge Road, and then also Beverly itself is all the same vintage six inch cast iron pipe or dunkel iron pipe. I think it was 1978, I think, somewhere in that range, 1880-ish, I think it was the installation on that. Age of it's, uh, not, usually a pipe should last 80 years, it's about halfway through its lifespan. Uh, there was a break on South Street in late December, early January, on that same pipe, you know, vintage of pipe, and I think part of the conversation became, should the rest of this be pipeier place now? Um, and, uh, so I did include a map, kind of showing what Beverly looks like. The street pickets pretty good shape, uh, sanitary sewer, best, I don't know exactly where it is, I think it's west of Beverly. Actually, there's a parking lot for the school, um, so that's the only sanitary manholes we can find. Um, and, uh, the water main through the grassy area in the south end is newer, but everything through the paved part of the street is 45-ish years old, 40-ish years old, so, um, that's one item. The second is, that entire neighborhood is, has one street, just turn, goes down through that neighborhood, and if this area develops out south of the school, a redundant entry access needs to be, needs to happen somewhere. Um, and the contractor's going to build a temporary road, uh, through city rightway in the grassy area there, just to keep people moving through during construction. Would you want to instead build something permanent, understanding that something's gonna happen through here, so?
Well, something is undoubtedly going to happen, because the school is going to offer the, the old fields south of Hilltop for sale, probably to a developer, and will get developed into either single family or multifamily. And we, Alana and I went up there and just kind of looked at the street configuration and how it could work, and you're right, it's another access, and also then if we redid that sewer and water on, uh.
Beverly?
Beverly.
Beverly, I'm sorry. Then that would serve that newer development.
Correct.
When it happens. So, it kind of makes sense.
It's, it's an item that you could, when, when this project is completed, the water main on South Street will be replaced, stubbed out, connected into the older pipe. The rest of it will function as it does today.
Yeah.
So you have an option to essentially do a change order in the contract, you'd probably get the best pricing right now to do the work now, or you wait till a developer salary gets closer to development and make the developer pay for it. That is also an option here too. Um, there's likely gonna be a realignment, the rightway's very narrow of Beverly. Um, there's likely gonna be a realignment, maybe some, uh, shipping west to try to get away from a house and things like that. So it could happen now, it could happen later. The, the contractor, at the very least, is gonna be doing a 15-foot wide path just to get, uh, vehicles through there. They could just do it as a permanent piece and just be done with it as well, so.
But in order to do that, we have to do the water and sewer portion right away.
The water? The water through the grassy area is new.
Okay. So that wouldn't be an issue?
It wouldn't be an issue. The issue would be is if you wanted to realign the road. And, um, if you just do it through the grassy area, probably be further west and you have some temporary stuff to kinda blend it all together. Uh, the sanitary sewer, as I mentioned, I think it's west of the street. Uh, I don't think it's actually in Beverly. I think it's likely in the parking lot. It's the only thing I can think of right now, as far as the sewers. I didn't talk to James about it yet. But, uh, that would not interfere with anything because that could be aligned in the future. If you want to do something without ripping up a parking lot, ripping up the street, uh, must have longer services. So it's, uh, you could do it now, you could do it later. You might get the best pricing now.
So if we go ahead and do it now, we should be able to, whether it's a developer or whatever, we should be able to put an assessment on it now?
That's a big question.
For the Doug developer, I mean?
If it's a deferred assessment on the actual parcel, I guess that's.
Well, you'd have to do it on the gross parcel because it hasn't been split up, but, because that's gonna.
Right, and you could divide that accordingly.
This is the math for the Hilltop zoning from the school board's meeting last night. So I don't know if you guys are talking about.
We're talking about.
That part.
Yeah, 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 which is one big parcel at this point. So if a developer comes in, they're going to subdivide it in.
Right, regardless, you could assess the developer and he can sell his lots accordingly, right?
Yeah.
With the assessments divided out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, the assessment process, we'd have to, for sure, to make sure that's done correctly. It could also be, if you had a developer do it, you could have a developers agreement that requires them to do certain things. And one of them might be constructing the intersection, uh, constructing the roadway. As far as anything north of that grassy area, the road is in fair shape. There's nothing critical that needs to happen there, except the water main needs to be replaced. Uh, so you could look at a water main replacement, put the road back to where it is today. Not build a full section or build a lesser section or whatever you wanted to do. Um, but, um, there could be, there could be something in between for sure. Uh, if you do look at reconstruction of the street, I do wanna mention that, um, December of last year, '22, I should say, we did, uh, pass the complete street policy. So if you are rebuilding, constructing something, there is gonna be consideration, would you run sidewalk through there? I just wanna mention that right now. So if you're doing something, uh, make sure that that is, uh, consideration too. Um, either a yes or a no. That's, that's all it needs to be, is sort of, uh, a review of it, but. Um, so if you are rebuilding, start, you might have to add sidewalk to it, so kinda getting, investing money into it, might do a little bit more. Um, but it's, it's gonna happen at some point, it's just when do you wanna do it?
Right. Chris, there's a hydrant on the northeast side of the school. Is that tied into the line that you're talking about replacing?
Believe we're, I don't have a plan in front of me, so I'm trying to remember if that's coming, if that goes west or if that goes north. If it goes north, it's South Street and we're replacing it. Um, but if it's going west, then we're probably not replacing it. I just don't recall exactly.
I'm just trying to figure out, does that come straight off of South Street to that hydrant? Or is that fed off that line that's gonna be replaced? And the reason I'm asking is because that's a low pressure hydrant.
Okay, that's on the low side of?
A very low flow.
Yep. Yeah, so if it's, uh, are you talking about on Beverly or?
Yeah, and it's actually kinda right on the corner of the parking lot there, on the northeast corner.
Sorry, yeah, that was confusing your location for. Yeah, so in that area, uh, we would replace it, we'd replace the water main. Um, and you're correct, it's on the low side of that, uh, PRB station there. What we're talking about is probably gonna change the flow characteristics because it's six inch to six inch.
Okay.
But I think at this price, if I'm looking at this right without the sidewalks, it's $225.
That's what I had in there. That was just, uh.
Plus the engineering.
Pavement costs, yeah, yep. And so the engineering would be, uh, we would do the road design, put plans together, do an estimate and be out there for expression. The cost is probably less than that because we are out there building a whole bunch of other streets. So that can all happen concurrently, which is, which is great, so. Um, the contractor would have the ability to amend pricing because this is a change order. So this is based on the prices they gave us for the big project. If they have to order 300 feet of pipe from their suppliers, it's gonna cost them more than when they order 1,200 feet because it's gonna be a separate delivery. Um, so there's gonna be some increase in cost. I don't know what that would be. And the contractor could say no. Yes, I don't think they would. Uh, they usually, they usually don't for this type of thing, but, um, they would likely request an addition or extension of their contract with additional work and things like that, so.
Because in my view, if you were somebody in later to do what we're looking at doing now, it might cost us double.
Yeah, I was surprised I felt the price. I was expecting it to be higher, so hoping that there's nothing wrong with that number, but that was just the 70 feet of 24 foot wider road with per.
So, but we could do the road without having to do the water and sewer because the water and sewer is off.
The, the water you'd have to do.
Okay.
Um, for about 400 feet, 375 feet.
And that's in the two.
Yeah, and I did, I expect it might have some drainage. The drainage part's tough and without designing anything with it.
Right.
Do you need to stick storm sewer up the road potentially? But, uh, yeah, I think the pricing right now is probably as, as good as you're gonna get, especially if you aren't looking at doing another street project.
Right.
Right now. So I mean, if, if you're talking about doing a small project in the future, this would be double the cost, just accounting scale.
Yeah.
But if, if you're gonna make a developer do it through part there, then it's that stuff in the southwest anyways.
It's always cheaper to do it when they're here, so.
So if we do it, will they get it done this 2024?
I wouldn't see any issue with that, can't. It's, it'll, the water main are here, we've done it in a week.
Yeah.
It's doing pretty fast. So we, we'd have, what I'd ask for you tonight is just direction, should I, um, I don't, I'm kinda presenting the apartment cost. Uh, do you want us to proceed with doing an updated plan? Or I could probably provide a plan almost like this to the contractor and just get their idea, is this what you wanna do? Uh, because we do have pretty rough quantities we can do without actually designing the street. Um, and just get an idea of what that cost would be for that's your next council meeting.
Yeah.
And if you proceed with it, then do you design the street and do it?
And then do a sidebar, place suburb or?
Yeah, yeah, it's the other side. It'd likely be a sidewalk on the west side of the street. It would not fit on the east side for sure. The drivers are way too steep, so it'd be on the school side.
Can you add a sidewalk under up there?
Yeah, and part of that consideration would be is that when that area to the southwest develops, how, where your conditions might be, they have to build a sidewalk on one side of the street and then you're not even at a little point that goes out of the neighborhood, so. Um, so for my point, I'll just talk to the contractor, get, uh, a little more refined quantities to get pricing up. So that's, as far as we need to go, then that's what we're gonna do next council meeting for.
Sounds good.
Um, other items on there, just a reminder, we are working on, uh, the bonding builder request for a water tubing plant, so. Uh, I do need to use my data language over to, um, our, our people at Ward, who's working on this stuff with Bobby um, and with Representative Carter, and hopefully get that all taken care of so that you'll have a $3 million request in the upcoming bonding bill. Um, so hopefully that proceeds and goes, gets awarded me to talk about the federal level stuff with earmarks. The 23 stuff hasn't been passed yet, so now we're at the 24. So they're already requesting 24 earmarks when they haven't passed the 23 field yet, so. Um, because that's how the federal government works. Um, so we will, in addition to having on the 23, we'll push it to the 24 earmark request, too. So that it'll try to cover that base. And then, um, just general grant stuff that, uh, it looks like a resolution here coming up for some of the, the DNR, um, grant, um, items for trails and parks, so we'll just be assisting with that. It's more just an FYI, I guess, at this point. But then maybe some resolutions probably, I think, uh, that'll be coming up in March, uh, for a couple of those programs, so. That's all I have. Take a seat back here.
Sounds good.
I mean, so.
City Attorney.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Big item for discussion here tonight, it's actually appearing under Kim's section, but I can touch on it certainly. It's Resolution 2024-06. Essentially, over the course of the past few months, the city has been in discussion with St. Joe's Parish concerning the purchase of some real estate. And there's been a little back and forth on this. Originally, we were talking two parcels. We were talking about parcel two, and a few guys have the survey in front of you. Uh, but we were essentially talking about, originally, we were talking about two parcels. We were talking about parcel two and what's listed as parcel four, which is essentially an access. Lana and I went back and forth on this with the realtor. Um, we've essentially come to the conclusion that we don't need parcel four. And in fact, parcel four would be detrimental to some of our interests. Parcel four is essentially a 17 foot wide strip from the street and alley. Um, it isn't an improved road. There are some trees in the middle of it. The question becomes, does the city really want to take ownership of that 17 feet? And after some discussions and back and forth and some onsite inspection, we decided no, that we didn't need parcel four. This, this parcel that we would be acquiring is parcel two. The purchase price would be $30,000. And to some extent, you guys have already approved that, that at past meeting, but we do need to firm it up here tonight because we are now just talking parcel two. Um, Lana, I, Kim, Mayor had some discussions on it. We have sufficient access, we believe, off of the alley. So again, your request tonight is simply to pass Resolution 2024-06. Authorizes the purchase of parcel two for $30,000. I do have a tentative closing date lined up for March 7th, so if you guys approve it here tonight, we'll proceed forward with the closing hopefully on March 7th. Does anyone have any questions on it?
No, just to clarify, that 17 feet is really Andy Blashke's side yard?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, you know, we, we were always under the impression that they were offering us the drive in from the county park, county garage site. Well, no, that's one of those lots that got sold to another person. It's 17 feet, that's five feet from.
And Andy's been maintaining it. The person that owned it before Andy had been maintaining it. There's accessory building there, basically a storage shed. There's another shed there that frankly is in pretty bad shape. Although, I don't think we need 17 feet and we were acquiring.
It was this cost as a.
Some potential title issues and if you don't need that 17 feet for access, just go with parcel two.
So my only concern is parking. So if this is gonna be the Hummingbird Center, where do people, visitors park?
There's room to develop parking, parking between the church and the hall.
Okay, and I thought they were gonna possibly put a garden there.
They won't put a garden there because they need.
Yeah, we'll put a garden there. The garden will be on the other side and if the person is purchasing the parcel, it just.
Going down the hill or?
Has agreed to let us use some of the, um, parking behind the, I think he's acquiring that, that parcel.
Okay, so then they're gonna come in on Mill Street, so we're building a road to connect up to the church, the.
The alleyways there, but it's always been, many alleys here there.
And it's covered in grass right now?
No.
They'll come in on Minnesota, right?
They come in on, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, Mill Street, you could, you, you could make it go straight through. I mean, it, it, it would be, uh, it would be.
That's what it'd look like.
But the alley does exist.
And it's, it's a 20.
But it, yeah.
It's a 20 foot wide alley and it's not the best of alleys.
But it's, it's there and it's totally accessible.
It's legally, it's legally defined and, um, it's not the perfect access frankly, but it is access nonetheless.
And was it development of parking so that nobody gets locked in there or it becomes confusing?
I think it, it works. It is, your point is good, well, thinking, I mean, it is, it is gonna be, it is gonna be tight.
What if they got 50 people up there?
What's that?
What if there's like 50 cars? People are gonna be parking in the mountains.
It's gonna be tight.
No, I'm.
Well, I mean, you know, our intention is that they would be able to, you know, if there's a bus or something, they could come South Street and walk in the front door.
Okay.
You know, it's accessible.
It is a little tight though.
Fred's the vice president of the board, so he's being pretty reasonable about stuff.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-06.
Motion made in second. It all will be received by body. Hold, motion made, carry.
All right, Kim, just give me a certified copy of that with seal raised and we'll proceed to closing. Like I say, that's March 7th. Sometimes there are little hiccups that cause closing to be moved. I don't anticipate on any of those. The idea is we can close on the 7th. In terms of that, um, we've got a new nuisance, we shouldn't say a new, but we have a nuisance property back in litigation. I authorized charges on that. Week ago, I suppose, there'll also be a ancillary probation violation tagging along with that. So essentially, we'll have two cases going on one property. We did wrap up a public nuisance case on another property. If anyone wants any details on that, you can certainly contact me through email, phone, or after the meeting. Other than that, I think the Highway 93 project is proceeding according to plan. Again, we have a whole lot going on that. We approved bids last month and, um, everything looks to be going according to plan.
So it's still projected to start in April?
That, you'll have to, a question minute now, but I can tell you from a document standpoint, everything that's going according to plan.
So I can't tell you the number of people that have been asking, when are they starting?
I know, I know. I expected to see.
Aren't they gonna start trees March 1st?
I think it was.
Well, they just, they, they have to have, basically have it done by March 1st.
Yeah.
They got the backhoe thing sitting out there.
What's that?
It's March 31st.
31st.
Okay.
Every time I drive to town, I expect to see something, but it isn't happening. I can tell you from a legal standpoint, everything's good. From a construction standpoint, that's not my case.
Well, they'll come in and they'll, they'll take them off. I mean, we saw a half, a fast six happen. I don't know who has the contract.
It'll be a little tougher out here, though.
Oh, yeah, there's more trees. MinDOT hasn't.
Steep buildings.
MinDOT hasn't had a, uh, pre-con yet, so we're kinda still in the dark. You haven't heard anything. Cause we're, they're, the county wants to do an open house on the 20th and then we'll get, we'll get into that later because I'm proposing some shuffling the meeting a little bit in March. Uh, just because the county wants to do the 20th. And that would be our meeting, but Tim is out of town on the 20th. Uh, but perhaps we can get MinDOT to show up on the 20th and, uh, actually give us a, a real update. By that end, they should have everything under control.
All right, anyone have any questions for me or anything? It's been a month or two since I seen you.
You can go on.
Thank you.
All right, I'll stick around for the closing.
Um, I do have one thing that if I can grab your email address, it's, it's regarding the library.
Sure.
Basically, wondering if the board members need liability insurance.
Uh, it's never a bad idea.
Right.
What's your email address?
Um, it's Crystal, spelled, all these things are gonna be spelled like they should be.
Aren't they city employees, do they need it?
No, just like glass, C R Y.
That's true.
S T A L.
Rose?
Rose Thomas.
We got it in here. Have you come down?
Nope, nope. Sorry. That one never worked for me. So it's Crystal Rose Thomas 326 at gmail.com.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll send you a test and if you don't, in ten minutes, we'll try again.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
All right, ET Park. Now we're trails.
So, um, Resolution 2024-7, um, this essentially is a resolution that's gonna approve the application for the next grant that we're working on, um, or potentially working on. Kinda wanna just get this, um, get this recorded so that I can start working on that now. Um, possibility of wanting to get this in for a book by the end of, first week in March, so I can go on this right now. And probably, like Chris said, be at least one more decision coming, probably March, um, regarding another application.
And rough, just roughly, what is this?
So this one is, it's, uh, the connector, uh, Trails Connection Grant. Um, this is the one that would connect local trails to regional trails. We haven't really gone too far into this yet. I'm not really sure if it's something that we're definitely gonna do, but something we wanna look into for sure.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
All this, all it is, is a basically approving your.
Application.
Yeah.
Is effort to.
That we're going to effort to pursue it. Sure. I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Before you sign that, you might want to change the correct spelling of nine centers, N E Y.
Yeah, you're wrong, aye.
Bill and I are the science guy.
Won't be a good deal.
Carl probably.
Submitted the ET grant. That was back on January 31st. Haven't heard anything about that. We're holding on to tree grant number one. Probably start to order trees soon, so we want to talk about what we want to do with that fairly, fairly soon. Still holding on, waiting on DNR for grant two. That should be, you should know about that very soon. Let's see here. After that, we do have election coming up, Presidential Nomination Primer. That's going to be on March, Tuesday, March 5th.
Is that here?
That'll be right here, yeah.
Okay.
Election judges have been in their training and getting all that stuff taken care of. That should be good to go in a couple of weeks. Let's see. A couple of weeks ago, I was at the Yeller's Conference and I did run into Todd there and they were talking mostly about this financial management plan that was on the books to do several years ago, but just didn't really pan out at the time. It's something that I think we should really look into long, long as well, along with utility rate study. So they are going to put together, basically, I'm going to have a meeting next week with two of those people to just kind of lay some groundwork and talk about what, what next steps would be on something like that. After that, just had this County Road 6 open house set to be here, March 20th, like Keith was saying, from 4 to 6. Still, I have a call and email to Forrest to see if he wants to do that. I have not heard back from him yet. And the last one on that is for annual employee and council member conflict of interest statements, something that council signs every year to declare any conflict of interest. If you do that tonight, and I'd back to you, I would appreciate it.
Oh, these are all individual ones?
Yes.
Can I see this one?
Yeah.
All right. So City Council, Mayor, the March 20th meeting is an open house with County Road 6, so they're going to come in. But Tim's gone on hiatus and not here on the 20th. I would propose that we move, if it's okay, move the council meeting back to the Monday, the 18th.
Does that conflict with the fire meeting?
I'm just. Does it?
Did you have one this month? Did you have one in February?
No, we had one in January.
Right.
Oh.
So we'll have one in March, on the third Monday.
Or do we go with the Wednesday before?
We could do that too. Yeah, that's fine too.
Or the Tuesday before. Can we do Tuesday before?
Just to do it Tuesday instead of.
Wednesday.
Wednesday? So it works.
So the 19th?
I'll be going on the 19th, October 22nd.
Okay.
So what do we want? Want to go the 13th?
The week before, Wednesday. Yeah, let's do it.
March 13th. Do we have that revised meeting schedule page in this packet somewhere?
Yes, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The other thing I have is.
March 30th.
We have a request. I don't know how many of you guys are up to date on that, from the Riverbod for some funding. We have an application. And I want to create a, it's time to recreate the EDA, I think. And this is a good time to do it because they can review these documents and come back to us with a recommendation. I talked to Rod, the Happy Spanker in Anderson, and he's agreed.
As long as he's happy.
He, he's agreed. I'd like to put Jeff Steinbauer on it, put myself on it. And there can be one more council member in a meeting conflict. Steve? Okay. All right. So I make a motion to appoint myself, Rod Engel, Jeff Steinbauer, and Steve Selner to the EDA.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. So you will get us, you get it provided via email or spoken scan, email.
I have secret care on the road.
Okay.
And the Jason copy.
And then the first part of the script will get together. I'll call everybody and see if that works. So, all right.
Once I mess my packet up, I can't find it.
What's that?
Once I mess my packet up, I cannot find any. I did. I tried to separate it into like, okay, this is. It is, but most of it's purchase agreement, so I'm trying to get rid of that. So it's like, anyway, sorry, carry on.
Cash balance, financial stuff. Got anything to add?
Uh, no, nothing to add. This is a cash balance as of January 31st. We just don't have bank CDs. We've been there just because the state bills don't come out until much later.
Okay.
They'll follow, basically, long beyond.
And the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve, went through, same final.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion made and carried. Local Board of Appeal, is there any local business? If not, Local Board of Appeal, legalization meeting notice?
Yep, they're starting to send us out. That meeting is going to be here Wednesday, April 24th, 6 p.m. for the Board of Appeal legalization. I think me and Randy are still good to go on that. I think that's all.
That's, is that that truth in taxation?
No, it's where people could come in and.
Property taxes.
Or their valuation.
And I'm assuming the County Assessors Office handles yours?
Yes.
All right. Revised meeting schedule, obviously we talked about that, from the attorney, possible closed meeting under MSA, so.
At any time you initially consider allegations of misconduct involving an employee, you do do that in open, in closed session unless the employee requests an open session. Employee in this case has requested that it remain closed. Now, with that said, so the mechanics of it would consist of somebody making a motion to go into closed session under Minnesota Statute 13D.05 sub 2B. We would then discuss the allegation itself and any discipline would be conducted in an open session. So we'll go into closed session, then we'll go out of closed session, and then any discipline to be achieved would be done in open session.
All right, I will move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. With Mayor's permission, I'll give a brief update.
So that part gets seen out. Okay, we're back in open session. It's about 8:11.
Do we need to make a motion to open or we just say we're open?
You already heard that, didn't you?
No, we're closed.
Yeah, you have.
Okay, I make the motion to open the session.
And I'll second it. Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, with Mayor's permission, I'll give a brief update. The council did make the closed session under Minnesota Statute 13D.05 sub 2B to discuss allegations involving initial complaint of misconduct. Council did opine that misconduct did per, and does someone want to make a motion regarding discipline for the subject employee?
I'll make a motion for the verbal, or the written, written reprimand, written reprimand.
And who is to do the written reprimanding? Who's to?
Attorney Gray.
Okay, I will do. Very good. Motion's been made.
I'll second it.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion made and carried. I will do that and it will be done. All right. Do we have any other business?
Can I ask to have the Christmas lights taken down, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we have city staff do that?
No, I don't think so. I, I just, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
And I think, and I think we should just set up.
Automatically, this day they go up or within a week and this day they come down?
Yeah.
Oh, they're so shot.
Oh, I know.
Once the street's redone, we've got a fund trying to raise money for new holiday lights.
They'll have to be replaced. But it was like, okay, last fall, we were getting so much grief, I used to have painting to do it. And it's just smoother painting. It's done in about 45 minutes and nobody gets hurt.
Okay, so please take your.
That's for a while.
Yeah.
We can just leave them up all year. Henderson can be the new Christmas in July.
Yeah, you told us, I said, well, hey, just leave them up.
We didn't have a winter, so we're just going to.
Well, yeah. All right, so we'll just take them down. But we should establish a policy.
Yes.
When they go up? When they go down?
Want to approve this?
What's that?
Revised meeting schedule.
Yeah, so who's starting? Is it the?
So the Chamber, the Chamber has a fund to raise money for new holiday lights. So when Highway 19 gets redone and we get new light poles, we want to get different decorations to go on those poles. So we do have a fund through Community Foundation, Henderson Community Foundation. So if anybody wants to donate, they're handling the money for us until we buy something.
I think we're, frankly, at this point, we don't even know what, you know, what new lighting system will look like.
Right, we have to come up with a design for Main Street yet.
Yeah.
Which will be three or four years down the road.
Right. All right, so we need a motion to approve the revised meeting schedule.
So I'm.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. May you adjourn?